We will now call the meeting to order. If we could please rise and pay attention to the individual providing the invocation, which is Pastor Carl Frazier. Pastor Frazier, if you could come forward while I read a little bit about you. Pastor Carl Frazier is a pastor and he's a pastor and has a degree in financial management and he's an analyst for New Hope and Love Community Church. Pastor Frazier pastors a multicultural organization at New Hope and Love Community Church in Topeka. He serves in many community leadership capacities, including jump, the Justice Unit Ministry Project Board Member. He's a chair-elect of the State Chiro's Prison Ministry, International Chiro's Torch Prison Committee, the vice-chair-elect of the Center for Peace and Justice in Topeka, the Topeka Gun Violence Task Force, and the vice-chair for the faith leader sector of the Human Trafficking Task Force that we have through the rescue mission. He is bivocational and has worked for the Department of Agriculture for over 30 years in the financial arena and is currently serving as financial management analyst for FBC. He previously worked in the Kansas City Health Department HIV Services Division as program manager of the Housing for People with HIV and AIDS Program. Carl's memberships include but are not limited to the Sunflower Foundation Fellow in 2018, lifetime member of the Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity since the spring of 80, gold lifetime member of the University of Arkansas Pine Bluff Alumni Association, leadership Greater Topeka Class of 2009. He says it's the best class ever. I think 2017 was. Association of Government Accountants, National Association of Black Accountants, Topeka Baptist, Ministers Association, and Who's Who's among professionals. He's married to Lenesa Frazier and they have three lovely children, Laurenta, Carly, and Emerson, and two wonderful grandchildren, and I have the distinct honor of calling him friend. Pastor Frazier, if we could please rise if you're able, and we're going to follow the prayer with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah. In honor of the mayor and the state and the members, I would like to thank you for, especially Councilman Aaron Mays for inviting me to say the prayer for the day. Before I say the prayer, I'd like to say happy birthday to the oldest black fraternity in the United States, Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity. We are celebrating 112 years as of today. We was born in April, I mean, 1874, 2006, in Ilkla, New York. So I'd like to thank you. Today, Lord, as we come together in this chamber to give thank you and honor and praise what you have continued to bless our life, but there are many standing in the need of prayer today. While we thank you for jobs, but there are many that are unemployed, while we thank you for shelter, there are many that are homeless, while many people can find jobs but not reasonable transportation, while we thank you for good health and insurance, there are many people suffering without health insurance, while we thank you, Lord, for a reasonable mind, there are many people suffering from mental health, while we thank you for today, there are many that does not see hope for yesterday, today, nor tomorrow. While we bragging on our children, there are children who are committed suicide, sex trafficking, killed, killed for no reason, gun violence, dropping out of school, no parenting or parenting, they have no control of their children at home, and expect teachers to teach and parent at the same time. While the stock market is heading up to the highest, but we still have property and hopefully it's in our community, while we see improvements in property, but we do not see improvements in many people's life. I stand before you, Lord, not asking for you to remove these mountains from our life, but help us solve solution to help us climb. I ask you to help city managers, city members and mayor, and the people of Topeka to work together in love and happiness. If one of us hurting, all of us hurting. If one of us fall, all of us fall. If one of us be lifted up, all of us should be lifted up. And, Lord, I pray for the health and strength of families and the soul of everyone other my voice today, knowing that one day that we will have accountability of what going on in our city, and we will continue to bring you, bring those that need hope and love in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can you hear me? I know they can see it from the camera. One, two. Yeah, I'm pretty loud. If we could have Marty Hillard and his beautiful family come up alongside Luis Estrada and Jamie Crispin. We are here to celebrate an award that we give on a annual basis, and it's a great honor to give this award. Troy Scruggins, a member of our community who devoted his life to ensuring that every single human being in this city was treated equitably with dignity, regardless of their socioeconomic status, their race, their gender. It was all about equality, and those values are values that are important in Topeka and are important in our nation and should continue to be extremely important today and always. And for us to have the opportunity to celebrate with the Human Relations Commission the successes of our citizens is a great joy of mine because we're here celebrating today, Mr. Marty Hillard. Marty has been an individual that has been at the forefront of speaking out and advocating for every single person in this community, regardless of their socioeconomic status, bringing to us very charged issues of race in a very respectful manner, so much so that he has done it through music and through art. And Marty has been involved in so many things in our community, so it is very fitting, very fitting to recognize you today. Luis and Jamie, if you guys would like to say a few words?
I think we jointly knew that Marty was going to be our nominee for this award, and we're just very excited to honor him in this way, though I know that he doesn't fully enjoy being the spotlight. I think it's well deserved and well earned.
Yeah, this is one of the proudest moments for myself because I'm getting to recognize a person that I admire in the community that has really motivated me to do a lot of what I do. Seeing him fearlessly go through a lot of compassionate work really motivates me to continue to do what I do. And one of the things that I recognized when I was appointed into the commission was that I would have this privilege to recognize that in a friend of mine, so. Marty Hill?
Congratulations. Thank you.
I'll keep it brief. I want to express gratitude, first of all, to the Human Relations Commission for recognizing me in this way, as well as to City Council and Mayor De La Isla for providing the space for this to occur tonight. I also want to thank City Manager Trout, Chief Cochran, for taking this issue very seriously. It's not easy to talk about crime in the city of Topeka. It's not easy to have a conversation about police-involved violence. These are very charged issues that we're talking about that really affect all of us in a lot of different ways. And for me, this has been a very tumultuous year, a very difficult year for me personally, psychically, spiritually. But I am filled with gratitude that this award not only is a reflection of the work that I've done in the last year, but a number of my friends and comrades who stood with me and were willing to agitate, first of all, to show indignation and to express frustration with the standard that had been set forth. A lot of times, that's seen as uncivil or disrespectful, but the reality is there's no more respect or dignity that you can grant the people around you by serving them in a way that raises the flag and puts everything on red alert to make sure that everyone's voices are heard. So I share this award with them. I also want to thank Teresa, Molly, Brock, and Kelly, Dominique White's parents, for allowing me to stand alongside them and their family this last year and to acknowledge his life and his memory and a bare witness to the person he was, not just who he was on a rap sheet. Thank you all very much.
We now move on to the roll call.
Mayor De La Isla?
Here.
Councilmembers Hillard?
Here.
Claire?
Claire.
Ortiz?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Padilla?
Present.
Jensen?
Present.
Mays?
Cohen?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
We now move on to item two, which is the, item A, which is the board appointments. If the clerk would read.
A is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Doug Hubble to the Board of Plumbing Examiners for an unexpired term ending September 1, 2020. B is a board appointment recommending the appointment of William Nager to the Topeka Human Relations Commission to fill an unexpired term July 1, 2020.
We have heard the items and the appointments. Do we have a motion? We have a motion made by Councilmember Cohen. We have a second by the deputy mayor. Any comments or questions? The mayor does not vote. We proceed with voting.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voting yes, the motion passes. I think that we do have, is Mr. Hubble here? No, but we do have Will Nager. Will, if you could please stand up so that you could be recognized. Thank you very much for your service to the city of Topeka and for agreeing to serve on the Human Relations Commission. We really appreciate you. We now move on to item three, the consent agenda. If the clerk would read.
A, our minutes of the regular meeting of November 2018, and there's a list of sterile malt beverage and dance hall license applications in front of you. Staff is recommending approval.
What is the pleasure of the body? Deputy Mayor?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by deputy mayor, second by councilmember Padilla. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we proceed with voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voting yes, the motion passes. At this point, we move into the action items. Action A, item A, if the clerk would read.
A is a public hearing to consider establishing a benefit improvement district for street and stormwater improvement project T 601101 Phase 1 in Aquarian Acres subdivision number nine, and a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout authorizing street improvement project number T 601101 Phase 1 to pave streets within Aquarian Acres subdivision number nine as more specifically described herein.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're asking you to conduct a public hearing on the establishment of the benefit district and considering approval to authorize to pave the streets within Aquarian Acres subdivision number nine. The last time the governing body approved an improvement district was in January, January 3, 2017. That was Horseshoe Bend and Misty Harbor. Aquarian Acres is identical to Horseshoe Bend and Misty Harbor in that respect, and so at this time, we would conduct a public hearing.
Okay, we are now going to open up the public hearing. This would allow any individual that is interested in making statements towards the body of the council to do so. So are there any individuals here that would like to speak in the public hearing session? Are there any individuals that would like to speak in the public hearing? And for the third time, is there anybody that would like to speak? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to make one comment, and that Mike Drippy from Drippy Construction and engineer Jeff Lobach are here if there are questions from the governing body.
Comments or questions from the body? Councilmember Emerson?
I just wanted to comment, Mayor, that you guys might remember Mr. Drippy last year was the, did the, volunteered for the St. Jude's Dream Home, and he's also been instrumental. He's developed a lot of these properties, vacant lots out in Aquarian Acres, and he's done a fantastic job, and I look forward to doing this subdivision as well. And with that, I will move for approval.
We have a motion for approval by Councilmember Emerson. We have a second by Councilwoman Clear. Are there additional questions or comments? Seeing none, we proceed with voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voting yes, the motion passes. At this point, we move into the action items. Action A, item A, if the clerk would read.
A is a public hearing to consider establishing a benefit improvement district for street and stormwater improvement project T 601101 Phase 1 in Aquarian Acres subdivision number nine, and a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout authorizing street improvement project number T 601101 Phase 1 to pave streets within Aquarian Acres subdivision number nine as more specifically described herein.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I want to mention that the notice for the budget hearing published in the Metro News identified an amendment to the law enforcement fund. Staff has determined not to pursue the amendment at this time related to that the project is going to be relooked at and considered at a future date, and so we're looking at not needing that amendment. At this time, there was mention regarding the IT fund. Analysis by staff is that we're right on the edge relative to that particular project, and given that it would potentially go over, and the money that if you would allocate the budget amendment as is proposed would stay within the fund. In other words, if we don't need the money, it's still going to be there within the fund, that we still consider the amendment, it's only as a precaution, and we won't use the money if, you know, it's simply there as a precaution in case the expenditures were to be able to happen. We're still working on some projects. If we move them forward, it could cause expenditures to be slightly over. Everything, though, is staying within that fund, so that's why I still think we should go ahead and include that as part of the amendment with the resolution next time.
Thank you. At this point in time, we open up the public hearing. If any individual would like to speak with regards to this action item? If anybody would like to speak, they're welcome to come. If anybody would like to speak, you're welcome. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. What is the pleasure of the body? Are there comments, questions for staff? Councilwoman Ortiz?
I'll make a motion to approve for discussion.
We have a motion for approval by Councilwoman Ortiz? Oh, we don't, we don't need, not for this one, because there was a hearing. Pardon me.
Okay, well.
Action is next time.
Actions next time. So we're just accepting. Well, you.
Councilwoman Ortiz, yes, you have the floor. Could there be discussion, though? Yeah. Yeah, I closed the public hearing already. Yes, Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. You mentioned there were some projects that we probably won't need. Can you mention which projects you're talking about? I mean, we have a lot of projects, City Manager.
I know.
And I just want to make it clear.
And specifically to the IT fund, we are currently in the process of changing out the phone system at the police department, and then we also, and so there are a number of phones that would need to be ordered and processed for payment. We're still continuing to move forward, and we have had meetings with our vendor towards moving that project forward. If we can move forward, we'd like to. It's a project that was identified. There are still funds within the IT fund to be able to pay for that. The other project is, we are expecting our 2019 lease cruisers to come in, or explorers. There is a computer that is mounted in each of those. If we're able to move forward with getting those outfitted and ready to put on the street, we would need the computer units, so we would be the MDTs that they use in the vehicles. If those vehicles were able to be outfitted and ready to go, we would need those, to purchase those computers, which, depending on the number that would occur, that would cause whether or not that fund might go over or not. Those expenditures are eventually going to happen out of the IT fund. It's just a matter of timing, and so if we can continue to push forward in getting the projects done, that's our desire.
Does this include the fence?
That is covered under the LAC, or, I mean, with the police department budget and the trust fund. And that trust fund, relative to that expenditure, we're going to modify the project, and then we're also looking at, obviously, with modifications of the project, we won't be able to look at that project until 2019. So we don't need to make the amendment.
So it's not going to come out of here?
Yeah, so that will change. When you see the resolution at the next meeting, it will not include an amendment to that particular police trust fund.
Thank you, Mayor.
Additional comments or questions? Councilwoman Hillard?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just, I appreciate the itemization on the IT fund. I just am still having a hard time. Just as a practice, if we're not going to vote on this until the 11th of December, it's just hard for me to imagine that we would have something unexpected happen in 26 days or 20, 20 days, I guess, before the end of the year that couldn't be paid for or invoiced, and invoices paid after the first of the year and next year. It's just, it's so late.
City Manager?
You know, I would understand that position if we were dealing with the general fund and there may be other needs for those monies, but this is compartmentalized and just the IT fund, so whether we spend it in this year or next year, it's all going to come out of the same pot relative to the IT expenditures. And so rather than putting brakes on projects that we want to complete, because we've already converted the phones within the City Hall and also over at Holiday, we need to continue to move that project forward as quickly as possible. So rather than causing IT to wait to complete that project, it's better for us to continue to have the authority that if they have the time within their work schedule to complete the project, that we move forward and conclude, rather than waiting for an expenditure that will eventually happen anyway.
It looked like there was about $400,000 left in the fund as of the October month leave financial report. So we're really going to spend that much?
I think there's more than we can, but I'd have to defer to.
No, in budget authority, I'm sorry.
Oh, in budget authority, yes.
Budget authority alone?
Right now, we're at, the number I got today was we're at 16% of, 19% of authority left, and it should be a target of 16%. We are in a good shape, but if we're able to do those projects, we would potentially kind of.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, we move on to the next item, item C. The clerk would read?
C is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout levying an additional special purpose city retailer sales tax in the amount of five tenths of one percent within the city of Topeka effective October 1, 2019, amending City of Topeka Code Section 35010 and repealing original sections.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, tonight is the last step that we need to take relative to the half-cent sales tax fix our streets project. This resolution is presented in order to complete the steps, state law requires a governing body pass an ordinance levying the tax. The ordinance will be provided to the Kansas Department of Revenue, which administers this tax.
Does the body have any questions or comments with regards to this item? Not? What is the pleasure of the body? Deputy Mayor?
Motion to approve based on the commitment of the City Speaker.
We have a motion for approval by Deputy Mayor Jensen. We have a second by Councilmember Cohen. Questions or comments? Seeing none, we proceed with voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voting yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item D. If the clerk would read?
D is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout relating to designation of street names, more specifically changing the name of Northwest Catport and ADR Industrial Park subdivision to Northwest Kena.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, this is a simple request, change the name of a street. The owners of all the lots are in favor of this change, and the planning commission and planning department staff are all in favor of this change. Bill Feiner is here to answer any questions, if there are any.
Are there any questions from the body? Councilwoman Clear?
And what preceded this change? Like, why the change?
Councilwoman Clear, the property owner came forward and decided that they wanted a new street name, and most of the subdivision is not developed, it's undeveloped, so it didn't affect, there's one new owner that has started to develop in that subdivision, so it really didn't affect anybody. The new owner of the building there agreed the name change, so it was more of a personal matter that they wanted to change.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to let the body know that this is what is considered an ordinary ordinance, rather redundant, but that's what it's called, and it means that the mayor does not vote on this ordinance, but the mayor does have the veto power. Just for history facts, I think that it's been used only once, was what the attorney was telling me. Only one veto has happened, and I just let you know that don't get too stressed because it's not going to happen here. Deputy Mayor?
Knowing that it will not be vetoed, I will motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval by the deputy mayor. We have a second by Councilmember Hillard. Any comments or questions? All right, if not, we proceed with voting.
Did you vote, Mayor?
Oh, gosh. She's going to reset it. I know, it's just the.
Okay, start again.
I just slammed the Capitol. We had to reset.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voting yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item E. If the clerk would read?
E is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout concerning liquid waste hauling, amending City of Topeka Code Sections 1320, 560, 570, 600 through 670, 830, 840, 890, 900, 920, and Section 1320, 940, and repealing original sections.
City Manager?
Last week, we heard a presentation regarding the ordinance change. Staff is available if there are any questions.
Seeing no movement for questions, what is the pleasure of the body? We have a motion for approval by Councilmember Lester, a second by Councilmember Emerson. If there's no discussions, we proceed with voting.
Oh.
I did it again.
Oh, we said it.
No, it's an ordinary ordinance.
Okay. Yep. Okay, we have eight yes.
Eight having voting yes, the motion passes. We now proceed to item M. If the clerk would read?
E is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout concerning liquid waste hauling, amending City of Topeka Code Sections 1320, 560, 570, 600 through 670, 830, 840, 890, 900, 920, and Section 1320, 940, and repealing original sections.
City Manager?
Last week, we heard a presentation regarding the ordinance change. Staff is available if there are any questions.
Seeing no movement for questions, what is the pleasure of the body? We have a motion for approval by Councilmember Lester, a second by Councilmember Emerson. If there's no discussions, we proceed with voting.
Oh.
I did it again.
Oh, we said it.
No, it's an ordinary ordinance.
Okay. Yep. Okay, we have eight yes.
Eight having voting yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item F. If the clerk would read?
F is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout authorizing initiation of condemnation proceedings to acquire temporary and permanent easements for the Arvonia and Winding Road Improvement Project number T 70101 for Phase 1.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Governing body, I'm requesting approval to proceed in the next step in the condemnation process relative to this parcel. Staff is available to answer any questions that you may have.
What is the, does the council have any questions? Deputy Mayor?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second? We have a second by Councilmember Emerson. At this point, do we have any questions? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you. Jason?
Jason? I don't know. Maybe, maybe City Manager answered last time. How close is this to the gas station?
How clo, the, I mean, it's, part of the property includes the gas station for the project as well as the property on Sam's. We're moving the road...
Right.
Away from the gas station.
Because what City Manager pointed out, it went rounded back onto Huntington, right?
Yeah.
To, to Arvonia, yes. I mean, Winding Road, we are basically relocating to move further away from the traffic signal, because as traffic queues up in front of that, you can't get out, and so we're basically...
Can, can you pull the map up for me? It just looks like it's awful close, and maybe I don't know what I'm looking at, to the gas pumps, so do we have to acquire all that too? So they'd have to move that? Who are those people? Yeah, I'm looking at it, but I wanted to show me too. I've got this number nine. I've got this. So is it the red?
So we, we have basically permanent right of way, and the green is the temporary, what we call temporary construction easement. And so what will happen is Winding Road will kind of follow that pink and green line and then realign down here with Southwest Arvonia. And so that's what I was meaning, is that this road intersection here goes away, and we're basically relocating that intersection further to the south.
And not so much to the north?
That's correct, yes ma'am.
Okay, because that, I mean, that would be a lot for them if they had to move their pumps and stuff, that's why...
Yeah, so all that's impacting the, the gas station is, you know, kind of the, the green is the temporary easements for construction, but the gas station will still remain in operation. And as we said, we've worked with their staff that basically this will still allow for the operation, for their trucking, for the unloading, everything, how we've, you know...
Because that, that little strip is, is right behind it, right? On the, on the east side of the green? That's where the unloading and...
Yeah, so they load here, but you can see the actual trailers in here.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and we have a second. We will proceed with the voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to Item G, if the clerk would read.
G is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, amending the district map referred to made a part of the zoning ordinances by Section 1850050 of the Topeka Municipal Code, approving a major amendment to the PUD development, PUD master plan for Gage Center to allow an automobile service station type one at 1301 Southwest Gage Boulevard, contained a property bounded by Southwest Huntington and Southwest 15th Street and Southwest Woodall and Southwest Gage Boulevard.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Planning Director Feiner will review the agenda item for the governing body. Bill?
Thank you. Good evening, governing body. This zoning request before you would change the PUD for Gage Center. As we, most of you know, it's at the southwest corner of Huntington and Gage. The specific amendment would add a gas station convenience store between the Wendy's and the Family Video Store, right along Gage Boulevard. The, so to do that, they would be removing, there's an actual detached building that was originally a Safeway when the shopping center was originally developed, and they'll be tearing down half of that and rebuilding it for the convenience gas station. There'll be a hair salon that will remain in that building. So, what's before you tonight was, what came before the Plan Commission is the site changes to, to make that happen. Really three policy issues, three kind of site issues that, that we reviewed at the Plan Commission stage. One, the edge of the, of the site, tried to soften that up, as it is right across from a residential neighborhood and on one of our main arterials, so you'll see more of a, a soft edge with landscape setback, berm, trees, a low monument sign, no pole signs. Then you also see a building that will meet our B standards for our forthcoming design standards, non-residential design standards. And then lastly, traffic. Traffic was also brought up during our public meetings. They did a traffic study, and it's found not to have, the only concern was providing enough storage on site so that there wasn't any backup into the, onto Gage. So there's a few adjustments to the site plan to make that happen. So everybody was happy. Plan Commission recommended approval, along with staff, and they did vote unanimously for that recommendation. So we ask for a motion to approve the ordinance.
Okay, the, the members of the council have any questions before we proceed with the ex parte disclosure? Deputy Mayor?
Just a quick one. Are they going to maintain the historic Gage Center sign?
Deputy Mayor, yes, there, there's no plans to do anything with the sign.
With that, I will move for approval.
Well, before we move into approval, we do have to have the disclosure of any ex parte communication. So any member that has, has had conversations either in favor or against the matter being considered should indicate that they have done so, and also indicate if they are able to provide their vote in a way that is not hindered by any of the information that they have received. Anything that is in the record includes the Planning Commission minutes, staff reports and attachments, the public comments during the planning session meeting, any information relevant to the matter, and it is important that this process is afforded to the governing body. So we would just go around. Councilwoman Heller?
None, thank you.
Councilwoman Clear?
I spoke to proponents and opponents, and yes, I can make a decision.
Thank you. Councilmember Emerson?
No communications on this.
Councilwoman Padilla?
No communication.
Deputy Mayor?
I've had emails and phone calls, but I'm able to make an objective act based to sue.
Councilmember Coy?
No communication.
Councilman Luss.
I attended the onsite hearing, or onsite meeting, as well as have had phone conversations and emails with members on both sides of the position, and I can make an objective decision.
I as well have read the documents that have been presented to us in the package, have not had any ex parte communication with any individuals either for or against, and I am able to make a decision. That being said, what is the pleasure of the body?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval by Councilman Lesser.
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Cohen. Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, we proceed with voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to Item 11, Item H, if the clerk would read.
H is update and possible action on the proposed camping ordinance.
City, City Manager.
I know the committees omit, and I would think that it would be more appropriate for the Chair of each of those committees to provide information.
Councilman, Deputy Mayor, or Councilwoman Ortiz? Would you like to start?
This is camping.
Oh, so Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. On May the 8th, we were given a task with this camping ordinance, and it has been a task. We don't want to just get out there and write tickets, we want to be able to help people if we can, to see, see what their issue is. We have 48 organizations that have come forward and want to be a part of this, from Grace Med to Stormont Vale, to the Police Department, the Fire Department, and the Mission, just to name a few. We had a meeting on October 30th, 3:30, and heard a lot of testimony from, I would call them the residents, the campers, or the homeless. It was very, I think we, we spent about, about an hour, hour and a half hearing testimony. Had to bring Padilla back on the Police Department there for a minute, get him out of retirement to help me out there. But, you know, they're, they're very compassionate about where they live, they don't want to be bothered, and I commend Sandra Cliff for even talking to one of the, the homeless that was a VA veteran. So I think we're, we're all willing to come forward. We've seen a camping tape of California and how they handled theirs and kind of some of the procedures. But now that we've heard testimony and, and we've gone through and we've gathered all this information, I've tasked the committee and different members that have come to come back to the table to see where we need to move forward. I've said from day one, we're not going to push this issue, we're not going to rush it, and I think we can all agree that there's a lot to be done. I'd also like to commend Sergeant Clam for doing his homework above and beyond, and doing other people's homework. He's done an excellent job. I forgot to bring it, but I think it was implemented on Tuesday with the paper of the ID, of IDing some of the homeless. And I was told, I think we're the only one in the United States or close to it, or top 10 that has done that, and to get them, so the Police Department is now giving, you can call him, and they'll, they'll give them IDs which will help with Social Security benefits, medical benefits, cash and checks, just a lot of stuff that we take for granted. One of the things that I was very impressed is to hear that population, they called him their friend. They said he had been out there, he talks to them, he sees what they need, but they refer to him as their friend. And I think that goes to say that a lot, and I think it goes back to saying, when we talked about trying to get people on board so that we can touch base with them, to see what we need, what they need, so how we can help them. And to hear, hear that contact, that they will contact him, and, and they were pleased. I, I heard one person not pleased with the ID, and I heard another gentleman, he was pleased. On his ID, it's very unique, and if you have it, I think it should, we all got an email, it had the location of where their campsite, their tent was, and I thought that was awesome. So he said he can just pinpoint it and know exactly where they're at, if they're calling for help, whether it be medical or emergency or whatever. So he's really thought outside the box, and he's continuing to do that. We thought about having some private partner monies come in. Henderson Construction is waiting to see how much they can donate, but we're going to set up account for that. But again, I'd like to, I don't know the proper, we, I've never done this this long, I've been here 13 years, but keep it, keep it in the, I remand it back to the committee or keep it in the committee. This is my report, I don't know if Councilman Padilla or Sandra Cliff would like to add anything, but it's, it's been an eye opener. It's been a very, very big eye opener, and I'd like to thank Deputy Mayor for patiently waiting on me, because he's got his committee waiting to go, but we had, we had to get through that, and I'll be meeting with the task force this month to sit down with them to make sure that I'm clear on some ideals with them. Like to thank city staff, Corey Wright and Sasha Hahn that have gone above and beyond and are, and are helping us to, to get this. It's not an easy task. We want to do it, and we want to do it right, and we realize it's, it's going to take just a little bit of time and patience to gather the information we need.
Councilwoman Clear.
Now, I enjoyed listening to the people that came forward. You have this idea in your head when someone says homeless, I mean, you automatically think, and unless you talk to them and listen to them, you think, wow, these are really interesting. I thought they were very interesting to listen to and their, and their thoughts and how they felt about it. This is really difficult, because we have to balance their rights with the businesses' rights, and they're just, you know, that's just really hard to do. But it is, it was really interesting, and I enjoyed talking to them.
Councilwoman Padilla, would you like to say a few words?
I would have to agree. Getting to know those affected by this ordinance is critical to us making a decision, because I think we have to avoid the, we're from the government and we're here to help you kind of a thing, because sometimes what, in our efforts to help, we complicate issues. And I think hearing straight from them what their perspective is, and I think it's really different from what ours is. They see it as a choice of their freedom, and that's something that I think doesn't come up too often in the conversation, that if I choose to do this, I don't want to be fined or criminalized for making that choice in my life. However, we still have a responsibility to provide the communication and the network that provide resources that they will, they will need, whether they deny it or not, they will need those even with their choice to be independent and live the way that they do. They will need our resources, and so we have to look at the bottom line of how we'll make them safe in our community, and still provide everything that the rest of the citizens and residents of Topeka would like to see happen. And I think that really, when you think about it, I don't think anybody really wants a negative outcome from this effort, and so I think that's the difficulty in trying to come to a solution, because you want to make sure that you don't rush too quickly to a decision. And I appreciate the efforts from the Chair, Councilwoman Ortiz, and from Councilwoman Clear. I think we gave every opportunity to listen and listen respectfully to what they had to say. Thank you.
Councilman Luss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too have attended a number of, of the Camping Ordinance Committee meetings because of the correlation of the Pedestrian Safety Committee that I'm also on, and, and one thing I, I wanted to point out was Councilman Ortiz did a, an excellent job in running that meeting under some difficult circumstances, especially initially as that committee started, started up the other day. You know, two things that, that I, that I did kind of gain from that is, if, if nothing else is, we have, we have a rising star in Sergeant Clam over there. That guy sits, thinks outside the box. The interesting thing to me was the clear amount of respect that was clear between the, the homeless individuals who, who interact with him, as well as the way that, that he talked to them, which, which further told me that individuals in Sergeant Clam's position are making a difference when we have the right people there doing that. And, gosh, just what a, what a great job he's doing. You know, secondly, the, the interesting piece about that that kind of energized me a little bit in, in moving forward, you know, because this is drug on a little bit, you know, but energized me to, to move forward and continue, you know, looking at this with the main aim of helping our constituents in certain fact areas, as well as helping these individuals who are homeless, is the simple fact that, that many of them, when they spoke, initially had their conversation being that they don't want this taken away, this is my right. But as they continued on and the dialogue continued during that meeting, especially when they were treated with respect, and, and Councilwoman Clear asked a couple of questions, was invariably, they all though at the end of the day said, if I didn't have to be homeless, I wouldn't be homeless. So... if I didn't have to be homeless, I wouldn't be homeless. So I take that as energy, energy for us to refocus and see what we can do to help eliminate, and at the same time, set some of those parameters that we're working on. So, thank you.
Thank you, Number Nine, for being there, and to the City Manager for being there as well, and to city staff. It took a toll on me. I tell you, it was very emotional. It was very emotional. That's not what I was going in there to do, but that's what I was there to hear. And to Chief Cochran, I just want to say thank you for putting that team together. And I heard you're trying to, we're trying to get another guy in there. So I say thank you, because we need that dedicated person. And they also heard us, our concerns as well. I wanted to point that out. Where business owners have a right, and they're tired of being violated with their, so it's kind of a, kind of a all-around conversation. I don't know if you want to add anything, City Manager? Okay. If not, I'll move forward. Lisa, if we can, that's my update or my report. And people have some homework assignments, and hopefully we'll get back and see where we go from here.
And Councilmember Ortiz, as you indicated, the work of the committee is not finished, and so I don't think any action needs to be taken. I think you mentioned perhaps having another meeting in a couple of months, and we'll continue down that path.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
We now move on to item I of the clerk.
Hi, is update and possible action on proposed traffic and pedestrian safety ordinance.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So as Ms. Ortiz indicated, we finished the bulk of the work in this committee, and our intent is, at some point, to merge the two committees to continue working on how to help people. The comments I would offer is how excited I am to see government work in this way. You know, traditionally, government comes in with a very large hammer and starts whacking things in a vague attempt to often make small things better. And I'm so excited to see us working as essentially a collaborator in chief in this position and pulling all of these private and nonprofits together to work with the public sector to really try and move the needle and help people. And at the end of the day, that's what we're trying to do in these two issues, is help people. It's not so much bringing in the heavy hand of government and force people to do things, because at the end of the day, that doesn't work with most of these folks. So all of the efforts in these two committees that I've seen have been focused on how do we pull together folks in the community and try to create a better life for these people and help them help themselves. And I'm particularly excited to see that continue. So this committee has not met since our last report. We are again awaiting the camping folks to be ready to merge the committees together and continue to work to help people. So that's the report on that.
Before we continue any further discussion, we do have somebody signed up to speak on this item, and that is Ms. Teresa Miller.
Good evening, everyone. Reason why I signed up for this is because over on Northwest 25th Street and Rochester Road is a very dangerous intersection. You've got traffic coming from all over, and it's just crazy. All summer long, I watched three men standing around that intersection asking for money. Then when I go get my prescriptions, which is on the side of the liquor store area, all three of them wind up against the building, liquefying their dinner. So that doesn't make my day, that they stand out there and take money from people and then go and drink it away. So that is one thing that I really want to stress, that we've got to do something with this panhandling. Even if we have to go and do a lot of research in other cities, see how they're doing it, because there has to be a legal way to squash this. Because we've been working on it, how many months now? Quite a few months. So we really need to get this taken care of, because it's becoming more of a problem than anything. It's kind of dangerous out there on Wanamaker still. I have people standing there. It's supposed to be a bus stop there at, what is it? It's not, Huntington and Wanamaker, maybe? And again, if you're not paying attention, which a lot of young people don't, because they're doing crazy stuff in their cars, I've had to slam on my brakes several times to keep from hitting somebody there, because they're walking out into cars that's handing them money. So I'm just kind of trying to hope that we light a little fire underneath this and get this taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa.
Mayor, if you don't mind.
Teresa.
Could you give me that intersection again? I apologize. I couldn't write it down.
Pardon me?
That intersection again?
Northwest 25th and Rochester. It's right on the other side of Highway 24.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Any other members of the committee or anybody in the council like to ask any questions? Deputy Mayor Jensen? Councilwoman Heller.
Just a short comment, and it applies to both committees, really. I so appreciate that what has emerged as some time has passed is an absolute commitment to help people, but to help people to help themselves. And also, what I'm hearing with talking to the consumers, as well as the Police Department and the social service agencies, is to really step back and figure out what the problem is, so that we're just solving to what the problem really is. And that's been hard to find here. So just kudos to everybody. That's it. Thank you.
You had your hand. Okay. Seeing no other comments, there is no action item on this. So we move on to item J. If the clerk would read.
J is update and possible action on examination of similar underlying issues associated with the camping and traffic and pedestrian safety ordinances, including the five non-governing body members who have been appointed to serve as members of such committee.
City Manager.
I think one of the things that we're looking at here is that, given that we haven't completed the work, these two have not joined together yet. And so I guess there really isn't a report from this group, since it hasn't met.
Okay. We now move on to, there was a person signed up to speak. Did she leave?
Teresa. She sat in another chair, just testing me.
Looking for her.
Hi. Once again, on this camping, I want to use my neighborhood as an example, for one thing. We still have, and I'm not for sure if we even have somebody living in the garage now, because there's just so many people coming and going over there. But we still have someone living in a van that is all made up. They sleep in it with a heater and that. And like, again, for safety reasons, I'm so afraid, because these guys get high and they drink, I'm afraid they're going to go in there, knock that heater over in that van, and burn up. And then I'm going to feel guilty, because I couldn't get anything done. The other thing that I'm having problems with is, we've asked our community officers several times, what can we do on these situations? And we are getting the response of, they can't do anything, because their hands are tied. Until we pass an ordinance on all this, they really can't do anything, which frustrates them also, because they're ready to do something about it, because they're basically over it, too. So, but I wanted to draw your attention that, once again, this is going on, and I'm seeing more of this. And so I've also been with the camping. I've had someone from the other NIA come to me and complain about, it's an area on the other side of Kansas Avenue Bridge, really close to the dining area of the Mission. There's people over there in the wooded area that come out, and I guess it's really trashy over there now. I don't go down in that area. It's kind of like a dead-end area. So that was drawn to my attention, because I'd had a few calls on that. And I said, basically, come to my NIA meeting, and the gentleman did. And like the police officer said, there's not much they can do. So I want to let you know also that the frustration of our community officers are sitting there on their hands, because they can't do anything, because they are getting a lot of complaints. And so, you know, it kind of wears them down after a while, telling everybody I can't do anything. So I just wanted to bring that back up to you also. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. We move on now to the non-action items. If the clerk would read item A.
Is discussion related to the ordinance's establishment a service fee levy for 2019 relating to the Capital City Downtown Business Improvement District?
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Downtown Topeka Incorporated Director Vince Frye is present to provide information regarding the Downtown Business Improvement District fee structure and program. Vince?
Well, good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. I gave Nick a link to my presentation, but just in case you didn't get it, let me pass this out. And so you have something in front of you. Before I start, I wanted to just let you know that three of the Advisory Board members are here tonight. We have Ken Scott, who's the chairman from Capital Federal, Nick Excitus from Hazel Hill, as well as Angel Zimmerman with Zimmerman and Zimmerman Law Firm. As you can have probably witnessed, this has been quite a year in downtown, and consequently, it's been a very active year for the Business Improvement District. For you that are maybe new, this BID was created in 1986 by the city. And in 1995, the city decided they didn't have the staff and the resources to continue it, and they asked DTI to take it over. So since 1995, we have been administering this. I can go through this page by page, or I could answer questions. I think the main thing that you're interested in is if there's any changes in assessment. And the BID Advisory Board this year has brought to you a change. We had a three-tier system, and we are going to a two-tier system. We had .08 cents in the number-one tier, .06 and .04, the farther out you got from Kansas Avenue. So we're eliminating the second tier, and now we just have two tiers. We're raising the initial tier a penny and leaving the other tier at the same amount. Last year, we added empty buildings at half the rate, and we're continuing to ask you to do that again this year. I reported to you last year that in 1986, the budget was $175,000. This past year, the budget was $189,000. Next year, we anticipate it being approximately $209,000. So it hasn't gone up much. Our responsibilities continue to grow. And Paul Cervantes, one of our employees, you'll see out on the avenue and throughout the district, six days a week, sometimes seven days a week. We were able to buy him a new club car this year, and he's just so excited to get in that club car and drive around and enhance what he does for the community. With the chief here, I did want to mention that one of the significant things we did this year, I had asked the chief if the Segways would be back on the streets, and he said absolutely. But they were getting a little outdated and wondered if a new one could be purchased. So the BID Advisory Board, that was one of the first things they did this year, was to purchase a new Segway for the Police Department, which we presented earlier this year, which they're now using up and down and throughout the district. Just so much going on. Again, all the events that we've had, over 100,000 people coming to our events, new businesses opening, of course, the hotel going to open next month. It's just an exciting time for downtown. And the Advisory Board is really working hard to keep it safe, clean, and promote it. And so I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of questions. Mr. Frye, how does Paul clean this entire area?
Well, obviously, he can't get to every place daily. But he gets through the majority of the core every single day. He's in the entire area at least twice a week. And you will see on the map that it extends all the way from Monroe on the east to the alley just to the west of Topeka Boulevard. And I've got some stories of how he has really made an impact on those alleys west of Topeka Boulevard, and how he's got over there and cleaned it up, and cleaned up some of the people that are hanging out there that have not been the best for that neighborhood. So with the new club car, he's able to get around a lot easier than he was.
So when you move folks from Tier Three to Tier Two, is there going to be an increase in service that are provided as part of that move?
One of the reasons we made that change was they were getting the same services in two as they were in one. And it's only a one-block area. And that little tier of one block only generated about $1,800. And it was just a lot of work to build that area out. So we just thought it was much easier just to go to two tiers.
Well, the Tier Three areas in the old map, if I'm reading this right, this is the old map, correct?
On the right.
Okay. So then the new map, so all of these folks are going to get the same level of services Tier Two, then, with one person?
Mm-hmm. Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. I just want to make sure you guys have enough revenue to cover that, because I know.
Well, thank you for mentioning that. We would obviously like to have more. But the Advisory Board realizes that these are businesses that, you know, are being taxed in different ways. And they've been trying to keep that down and do as much of the work that they possibly can on the budget that they've been able to work with.
So my second question for you, then, is why are we charging empty buildings a different rate, yet giving them the exact same services in occupied buildings?
Well, initially, they weren't being charged at all. So two years ago, we realized they were being given a lot of the same benefits. And so the Advisory Board brought to you the opportunity to start charging at least at half the price. And there are some of those property owners that have worked hard to try to fill those. And, you know, they didn't particularly need the burden of additional assessment. But they are getting services, and we feel that that is at least something that should be assessed at half the price.
Is there an intent to move them to the full assessment at some point?
Well, certainly would be a possibility in the future to consider. And the exciting thing is, a lot of those empty buildings are soon going to be full.
Yeah.
Well, the only other comment I will make is, as a building owner in Tier One, I have seen an incredible service through this, and I'm happy to write that check every year, knowing that I don't have to scrape the sidewalk in front of my building at 5:00 in the morning, so employees can get to the bank and get to Westar. So once all the other questions are answered, I will be happy to support this.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. I'm Mr. Frye. I'm glad you brought Mr. Chavez up, because he offered me a ride in that little buggy, you know. He is, you know what? I have never met a person so happy to do what he does. He loves his job.
He does.
And he's there every morning, bright and early. And I see him when I'm walking downtown. I see him, and it's just amazing. He does all of that by himself. It's amazing. And he takes pride in it. Sometimes he carries his wife with him, but, you know. Anyway, I wanted to say that. I'm glad that, this is him smiling in the orange shirt. And he always has that smile in whatever he's doing. I wanted to mention that, again, I just love all the things that we do downtown. The only complaint I get is the Cruisin', the Capital Car Show. They say it's not long enough. You let them get started, and then it's time to go. So if we could just look at that just a little bit longer. They love being out there.
It's a great event, and we've seen it grow and grow and grow. And there's been a few changes to it. You know, we had the burnout lane in the past, and we do not have that anymore.
Thank God. That's right.
Yes. But we'll give consideration to that.
But they would like the hours to be extended, you know. Some people work, and by the time they want to come down and walk around, and they feel like it's just not enough time.
Very good.
Keep doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Frye, thank you for this. You guys did an incredible job with a very small budget. I really appreciate everything you guys do. I would ask, looking at this, it's clear to me, especially when you see the, kind of the west of the map, a lot of that area is state buildings. And I probably know the answer to this question, but I guess I'll ask it anyway. Does the state in any way contribute to this fund?
They do not. No. They do not, no.
Would you accept it if they did?
We would welcome it, absolutely.
Well, now they know if anybody's watching, if Governor Kelly is watching tonight.
It's not just the state that doesn't contribute either, by the way. But nonprofits and residential do not contribute to it either, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good idea.
Councilwoman Lister.
Couple of questions on, are the nonprofits, are they excluded because, by law? Is that why, is there statute that...
I think that was part of the original ordinance, nonprofits, correct.
I would just, this is very, very well done, very well done. I would just kind of second some of Deputy Mayor Jensen's comments in regards to taking a look at the vacant properties and using the same rate structure. You know, the thing that you kind of also have to look at is, you know, especially the retail, even from a certain, some of the service and even some of the office capacity that brings people downtown to those, their offices. Certainly, the retail locations, while they're paying this, they're also making a contribution through sales tax and what have you. And then, you know, the vacant properties, I think there's some that, as you say, are trying to do what they can, but from a business owner who's looking to get, as you know, find something downtown, there's also a number of properties that are just sitting there vacant that nothing's moving on. And I think they should at least pay for the same amount of services as the other ones, because they're, at this point, not contributing as well to the sales tax and what have you. So anyway, something to consider.
Well, with the members of the Advisory Board sitting here listening to you, we'll certainly take that into consideration for next year.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
So just a quick question. On the nonprofits, it's only if they own the building, correct? If they're renting, I guess the same would be the state. If they're renting space from a private building owner, that building owner still pays the fee, correct?
The assessment is only on businesses, not on the property owner.
Ah, okay.
Correct.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Vince, this is so good. And so even with your new rate schedule as it is, and charging the vacant buildings, which is fair, because they would have to clean their sidewalks or shovel them or whatever if you weren't doing it, it's probably a pretty good deal. But as they come on, then this budget will go up for you without us having to address them.
This is true. If they're in business January 1, they will be assessed. And naturally, as these buildings become occupied, why, everything will go up, we are confident, yeah.
That's just great. And I'm glad that whoever it was that brought up the fees, because I was thinking it was property taxes, and I had our assistant Liz helping me research that in legal recently, and where the state is leasing a privately owned building, they are on the property tax rolls. But when the question got asked, you, do you know for sure if it's state statute on the Business Improvement District, or if it's our local?
I'd have to go back to the original one, and I'm not sure without checking that.
Maybe we can check that, because I just remember so strongly that the idea of the state administration was to get those properties into private spaces so that the taxes would be paid. And I just didn't remember that it was the BID fees, so maybe we can look into that before next time.
Yeah, good.
Thanks.
Additional comments or questions for Mr. Fry? Vince, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We now move on to Item B. If the city clerk, it's okay. It's one of those days, City Manager, it's one of those days. Item B, if the city clerk would read.
These discussion related to the ordinance establishing a service fee for 2019 relating to the Topeka Tourism Business Improvement District.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have Kurt Young, the president of the Topeka Lodging Association, here to brief the City Council regarding the establishing of a service fee for 2019 relating to the Topeka Business Improvement District. Kurt?
Thank you, City Manager. My name is Kurt Young. However, I am the executive director of the Topeka Lodging Association. President Stephanie is sitting back here, and she nudges me every time somebody does that, so that's all right. This is our first report since the Tourism Business Improvement District was approved on March 14 of last year, and the assessment of a dollar, $1 per occupied or sold room, was initiated on January 1 of 2018. And we have gone through some growing pains. We spent a lot of time, I've itemized some of the things in this two-page report here today. We don't have a lot of color to show you. It's all just black and white, a lot of administrative functions and activities going on. I do want to compliment the city finance office. Through the last two or three months of 2017, and coming into the first of the year, it was quite a process to get everything established, get forms established, and a lot of those were prepared just from our own thoughts and processes. So the finance folks did a super job of working with us. I think we've got a process established now that works well. The hotel community is accustomed to the process now, and we're starting to experience some new things in the processes of collecting the money with property ownership changes, closing of properties, and things like that all contribute to the overall administration of the program. This program for 2018 was established and budgeted to function, or to provide funding for three primary functions. The first of those was to provide funding for the architectural services to build, design and build the downtown plaza. Secondly, to provide funding to reimburse Visit Topeka for a loan that they gave us to help us hire the legal staff that we needed to initiate the T-Bid. And thirdly, to provide funding for the Topeka Lodging Administration. Just to give you a brief update, currently on the architectural component of the funding process, we, in talking to the architects yesterday, we are approximately 75% complete with the design plans for the plaza. We look to finish up that process very quickly, and also in discussions with HTK, they indicated today that we'll probably be at a corresponding 75% level of funding or of payment processing by the end of January. Then the remaining 25% of their billing will be prorated across the remaining months that it takes to actually construct the plaza. So we will again be paying architectural bills throughout most of 2019, so that will continue. With the loan repayment, we have made partial payment to Visit Topeka. That process will continue as budgeted. But the big activities have been around the actual process of designing and developing the plaza, and that's been a real exciting project and process to be involved in. From a lodging association perspective, we've been actively involved in the design and the development. Our staff has been out doing presentations along with Vince from the foundation and DTI doing presentations to community groups to talk about the plaza, explain what it is and what it'll mean to Topeka. And then we're also working closely throughout, just all the time, basically. It's continuing to work with Visit Topeka and those in the business of generating heads on the beds and bringing tourists to Topeka. So there's been a lot of activity. We had kind of jumping around a little bit, but going back to the initial setup of the T-Bid process, we had a lot of training to do with the hoteliers. So it's been a very active year, just a lot of foot traffic and little sweat equity in the process, and we hope to be to a point very soon that we can make some announcements through the foundation as to the progress on the plaza. So if you've got any questions, and I will take suggestions for improving the format of this report, this is our first one. Vince has got the advantage on me for color tonight, so.
Vince didn't.
Vince didn't.
Do we have any comments or questions for Kurt? Councilwoman Hiller.
I just have one. Kurt, we are so lucky to have you. For those who don't know, Kurt, how long ago did you retire?
I retired in 2003.
Okay, and had a hotel at the time, or shortly after that.
For ten years.
And so got involved with that, but has been doing this largely as a volunteer. And I just think it's phenomenal, and you've brought so much. You've made a system that could have been complicated. Obviously, you've worked through the bugs on it, made it work. Just impressive, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Any other questions?
Seeing none, thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
We appreciate all you do. The last item on the agenda is Item C, if the clerk would read.
These discussion regarding Topeka Metro Transit Authority's request to amend the charter ordinance and increase TMTA's mill levy.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Susan Duffy and I see Jim Ogilvy here also tonight to present information regarding the Topeka Metro Transit Authority operations and their request to amend the charter ordinance and increase TMTA's mill levy. Turn it over to Jim first, it appears.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Manager. I have two responsibilities as assigned by Susan tonight. One, I'm to make sure that her display gets loaded so she'll have a show for you, and the other is to make sure that it gets advanced. So I'm going to be brief and to the point. I'm so particularly proud of the work that staff have done to become the Kansas Transit of the Year. During this past year, Susan's colleagues and the federal oversight people came together to select Topeka Metro for being the Transit Association of the Year in the state of Kansas. And I think it is exemplary of what is being accomplished here locally. I also, if I may briefly, recognize one of our key employees, and that's Ephraim Mathis, who's back there. He's with ATU. I always get the numbers wrong, so I had to write them on my hand, 1360. He heads up the union of our drivers and our repair staff, who do, who make sure that that happens along the way. Now, I'm one of just a number of people who have volunteered to sit through these meetings and the like, have the privilege of being citizens participating in the process, and I thank you for that privilege. But it does also allow us to see just what a tremendous job Susan and the staff have been able to accomplish. And I hope, as you see this presentation, that you will both be encouraged and supportive of providing more resources so we can provide more services to the citizens of Topeka. Susan?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Governor of the body. I appreciate the opportunity. My name is Susan Duffy. I serve as general manager for Topeka Metro. And I think this has been a long time in coming. So let's just get to the point. We are here today to share some information with you because we are asking for an investment in Topeka Metro. And I believe we were here just a year ago that some questions were asked of the future and how much it would cost. And I believe you asked the question, Mr. Vice Mayor, of how much that would cost, and we shared that with you, and the price tag was $4 million. The year before, I believe it was you, Councilwoman Ortiz, that said, "Let's get on with it, let's get going, and if you need something, come back and see us." Well, you know what? We're back. And today is the day that we want to share some information. I believe you have a hard copy, and you also have this on your screens. Anyway, we are asking for a mill levy increase, getting right to the point. The mill levy for Topeka Metro, as of 2020, when this mill levy would become effective, it would be a year from now, it will have been a decade since there was a mill levy increase for Topeka Metro. We believe that we have pursued operational efficiencies, grant funding, partnerships. We've tried to switch money around from low-performing areas and switch it to more high-performing things that will move us along. And so now I move to Slide Three, and I think here we just want to give you an idea of our operating expenses versus our capital expenses. That great big blue in 2014, that was the purchase of 10 buses. And so the way it was set up, and this was before I came, is virtually these buses were purchased in 2011. In 2014, we have 26 fixed route buses. They run approximately $500,000 apiece for diesel and about $800,000 for an electric bus. The next page, we wanted to share with you our financials. The orange color, the pumpkin color, is the mill levy. And you can see that we have fares. The fares have ranged between 12% and 15% of our budget. And then we receive funds from the state government, from KDOT. It is an allocation, basically, and same with the federal government. It's a formula they follow, and we received that, well, knock on wood, they have funded government, federal government for another two weeks. But that is kind of a, we get bits and pieces throughout the year. Anyway, that is our funding structure. The next page reflects our mill levy, and you can kind of see the dollar amount that we are receiving from the mill levy. It has not fluctuated a lot, but you know as well as I do how much it does fluctuate. So turning to Page Six, a little bit of our history. At one point in time, we were receiving JARQ money, and that money was really all about getting people to work, and we were the recipient. And at that time, we did have a night service. It was a demand service, but we did have it. We operated around till about 10:00. Then there was a portion of time where we stopped service at 6:30. We started back up at 8:00, and we ran till 10:00. We had a Sunday service. It was a limited Sunday service. Again, it was a demand response. It was not a fixed route service. All that money dried up, all of it went away, and for a couple of years, Topeka Metro still tried to provide that service, realized they could not support it, and all of that came to a halt in 2010. And service was reduced, charters were ended. It kind of just came to a basic fixed route service that ended at 6:30. In 2011, fares were increased from $1.25 to $2. Paratransit went from $2.50 to $4. There was a public backlash, I would say, and ridership dropped. The next page shows that ridership has remained steady despite recent trends. The next page shows that ridership has remained steady despite recent trends. When you're, you've got two, gas at $2.06, I noticed that at the Dylan's yesterday, 2:06. And, but still, our ridership has remained steady the last few years, and actually, this year, it has been on an increase. So, we've averaged around 1.2 million the year. We will be pushing close to 1.3 million. If you've noticed, we've got our Saturday rides free right now. We were supporting Small Business Saturday. Remember Rosa last Saturday? But we feel this is a way to get people on the bus. We're running those routes on Saturday. We're about half the ridership, and we've seen a tick up. So, we know we're getting people out, doing shopping, running their errands. That's a good thing. Also, getting folks to work. And they have been really thrilled. Anyway, next page, we talk about the fiscal savings that, or I'm sorry, the fiscal efficiencies gained through service transformation. Again, ten new buses. In 1998, we increased our miles per gallon by 60%. So, you can see, even though we kept those old buses around, about three years longer than we should have, probably, we're spending money on diesel that, you know, there's a trade-off there. We contracted with Capital City Taxi to provide less expensive paratransit service, and we've been doing that for several years. They go through our training, they are background-checked, they wear Dockers, they wear their polo shirts, they have a name tag on, and our riders love them. And it's working well. So, if they're ambulatory, we are moving them over there because it is a much, it's a less expensive service to provide. We are moving to an ADA, all ADA accessible transit. And I can't tell you how important that is in this community. And it's, it's for everybody. It's not just for those folks that are in a wheelchair, but it is for everybody who is pushing a stroller, pulling a grocery cart, or just has a little bit of trouble walking, or like the last few, the last storm we had, six inches of snow. By 4:00 on Monday afternoon, all of our stops were cleared, and that was, that was a good thing. People boarding the bus, and they did not have to stand in the snow. So, we are moving on that way. We feel having designated stops is a safety issue. It also will allow us for the bus stop amenities, and also that handheld device that our younger riders just absolutely crave. We did receive federal funding so that we can do the "where's my bus?" So, you will see that in 2019. We're so excited. You'll punch it in. If you like watching paint dry, you can also watch our buses move on the routes. And as a management tool, when they go to yellow, we'll know they're getting behind. When they go to red, okay, there's a problem. We maybe need to contact the driver and ask if he needs some assistance out there, if there's a particular issue. So, this is a good thing to keep us working towards that, being on time. If we're not on time, we're no good to anybody. So, we added the Freedom Pass and Mobility Coordination because we all ride together. So, we are focused on moving folks from that more expensive paratransit service that runs $26 a ride to our fixed route service, and we let them ride free. And, one by one, individual by individual, we are making that transition, and that is a good thing. And that has been so rewarding financially, but also to see all of us ride together on the bus. That is what ADA definitely is about, and I think in this community, we are making that transition and that transformation, and that is good. Infield operator relief, we started doing that. That's reduced some overtime. And we've looked at reducing some of the low-performing service, and that has saved us money as well. So, what have we done? We've reinvested that money to enhance services. Kids ride free six years, 41,000 rides. It's working. We're teaching a whole new group of young Topequans how to ride. The Metro Bikes, the first bike share in the state of Kansas, provides that first-last, first and last mile transportation. We added a Saturday Oakland service that was not there, so that's been there now for three years, and it's being used. We added a north-south route on Washburn, and that is like our fourth highest performing route, and it's something that we really needed to do here in Topeka. The Flex On Demand for Southeast Topeka, that's, we weren't serving this neighborhood at all, and too far to walk. By having that Flex service, they call in, we pick them up, no cost, take them over to the East Topeka Walmart, they get on the bus, then they ride where they want to go. And they pay the fare at that point. But we are getting them from a whole neighborhood we can't even get into, and it's too far for them to walk. And this is something that I think we may explore in other areas of the community, like in the southwest part of the city where we're not serving real well, or in the southeast part of the community. We partnered with USD 501 and Washburn to contract for student passes, and I'm proud to say that this year, all the 501 high schools and for the middle schools. And we have a lot of middle school riders, and that's a good thing. We extended evening service on all our routes back in 2016 and our paratransit, so we're on the street till about 7:40. We will be ADA compliant by the end of 2020. That is my goal. We have extended routes to Uris Road and to the old Topeka State Hospital grounds to Servaleo and the new Cotton O'Neill Orthopedic Center. Soto, it's coming up on a year, over 1,000 rides in the month of October, about 8,500 rides to date. We know we're getting people to work, and that is one of our premises, get people to work and kids to school. And this is working well. We will be going before the Jado in a couple of weeks to ask for Phase Two of Soto and also Phase One of Netto, North and East Topeka. So, that would be Reesers, and then all those businesses, PTMW, Goodyear, Smokers, there's a whole bunch up there that we're not serving, but we've been meeting with the HR people, and it looks like definitely we will be asking for that. The Reesers Plan at Six and Croco, we're now serving that. And when we took off the 29th special, we did go back to 33rd Engage, and we have improved our South Topeka coverage. So, we have reinvested those monies back into the community. Now, a year ago, we started the planning process. We, this city has a pedestrian master plan, this city has a transportation plan, it has a safety plan. What we have never done is a long-range transit plan, and we need to do that to complement the other plans that are going on in the city, so that we can parallel with them and really grow this city in so many different areas. So, as you know, we've all talked to all of you during the spring. We initiated a phone survey, talked to 900 folks, and then two MetroQuest surveys, about 1,200 folks, had 10 open houses. And we have been to First Friday, we've been to the NIA's, to the N.A.'s. We've been wherever we could in this city to get input from riders and non-riders alike. And what we heard, 95% of the community, of those surveyed, believe it is important to adequately fund Topeka Metro. However, of those 95%, 74% don't even ride the bus, but they understand the value. What were the two highest priorities that we heard from those people when we talked to them and they took the survey? Add new routes and add Sunday service. Very clear, very, just so much far above everything else. So, adding new routes. We asked them to place dots where they wanted to add new bus service, and we're going to have to drill down even more, but you can see all along Wanamaker, there's a lot of requests in the south part of the city, the southeast part of the city. And virtually, if you look at our routes, we haven't changed much since about 1975. We've tinkered on the edges, but we basically have the same routes, and yet the city continues to grow, and we need to rethink how we provide this service. When we added the north-south Washburn route, we were shocked how quickly, without advertising, that people were riding the bus. I mean, it, it became very popular. So, I do believe there's probably some north-south routes we could work on, but we'll need to drive down and find out from people. Sunday service, absolutely. Sunday service over any other type of service, whether it be weekday or, or Saturday. And it was to go to church, and it is now to get me to work. And so, you can see by the bar graph how the red bar there really shows the distinct need for Sunday service. So, the need for buses is driving this discussion. We're like a family. We stick money in a savings account to buy our buses. And so, we have not been able to fully depreciate our capital like we're supposed to the last three years. And so, if we are to maintain our schedule, it takes about two years to birth the bus from the time you put in the order till the time it shows up at your door. And so, presumably, in 2023, we need to have some buses showing up to our front door, and we will not be able to fund those. That's just a fact. So, we know the longer we keep old buses, the more expensive they are. Our maintenance runs from anywhere between $28,000 a month to about $58,000, and the more the age, it rapidly increases as well. Transmissions fall out, air conditioning goes, heating goes, floors need to be replaced, that sort of thing. So, we have three options, do nothing, and if we don't receive additional funding, then we will be looking at staff and service cuts in 2019. That is a reality of what will occur. Second option is for the city to actually own the buses, and in your CIP plan or through your bonding, that you actually purchase the buses and have an agreement with us that we maintain them and that we operate them and run them. That is an option as well. Or the three is to add a mill levy, so that we can begin that process of, of moving forward and making some transformational changes. We provide, again, our mission, to get people to work, kids to school. The bottom line is, without additional funding, that we will begin those cuts, and we are letting you know that we will begin to work towards that end in 2019, and we are asking for an investment of one mil. Tried to make that as short as I could, but there's a lot of information, and I will stand for any questions, Madam Mayor.
Susan, thank you for the great report, and not only the great report, but the amazing job that you and the board have been doing in our community. Thinking outside of the box, I was so excited to hear how you guys are trying to make all of the buses ADA and supporting, because we've had, as you know, some citizens that have been very concerned with the cost of transporting loved ones, ensuring that people can get to work. You guys have really epitomized cross-boundary collaboration. You guys work with economic development, you guys work with the council, you guys work with our neighborhoods, and I just want to say thank you for everything that you're doing for our kids and for, for assisting our residents get to work.
It's been a lot of fun.
So, that being said, questions for Susan? Yes, Deputy Mayor?
Talk just real quick about how electric buses are going to help you take this one mil, mil levy, if you get it, and use that to extend it into the future and get a bigger bang for our buck.
I love the electric buses because of the dramatic effect they are going to eventually have on what we pay in maintenance. We pay a lot of money to replace transmissions. With the electric motor, we don't have to do that. The incredible increase in battery efficiency is making sure that we can run longer and longer during the day. Just three years ago, it was going to cost us $2 million to put chargers in. They're now building chargers into buses along the way. That means you won't have to spend the $2 million. And one of the other reasons I love it is the federal government will not give us any money for diesel buses. If we replace the bus fleet with diesel buses, we have to pay for the whole thing. We get 80% federal if we do electric. And that stretches out what we can do. All of a sudden, it, we not only upgrade the fleet and save the money for maintenance purposes, we pour that into these routes. We pour that into Sunday service. And that creates a whole different dynamic for how people live and work in this community because they have more flexibility.
I bring that up just because I want to give an example of how innovative Topeka Metro has been with, feeling the bike share program that is leading the nation in uses for city air size. You look at the, the, and big issue in electric buses and partnering with EverGee and how that can work. I mean, there are so many things that Topeka Metro does for our community that most of us never even see, and the planning they have to get it done is just incredible.
And I would add, Mr. Vice Mayor, we did intervene in the West Star rate case, and we did ask for a nighttime rate. That will be 2 cents per kilowatt hour versus 14. We were successful in that intervention. We asked for it not just for us as Topeka, but for any transit in West Star's footprint.
I have a question. So, if we're transitioning into electric vehicles, what, what are we doing for our budget to ensure that the employees that are doing maintenance have the training that they need to deal with the new buses?
When, we have been working with several of the companies that make the electric buses, they actually bring a person, one company, a person stays with your company for a year and trains all your maintenance. They have special training, but they come and make sure that everybody is trained as they are supposed to. And they're, they're like, either there or next door at another community, but that's how they do it. And yes, training is a large part of what the maintenance folks would be going through.
Wonderful. Councilwoman Lister?
Quick question. In reviewing the information, was the last ridership increase, was the 2011 the last increase you had in ridership charges?
Yes, it was, when the cost a ride went from $1.25 to $2. And to be honest, we are not the value of a $2 ride. And if you look at the communities around us, they're still at a buck and a quarter or a buck 50, or if they're at $2, they're running 20 hours a day. And that was done because some additional funds were needed, I suppose. I was not here at the time.
I was, it's not her fault.
But, it was a tremendous increase for, for those folks who ride the bus.
We, we faced a half-million-dollar hole, and we were not prepared to come to the governing body then until we got a lot of other numbers corrected about what we did. We knew we were spending a fortune in people through our paratransit, $26 a ride, and we believed that we could make the difference and the change, and that's been proven out by allowing them to ride free and getting them to, most of the time, ride on our fixed route system. It saved us a world of money. We wanted to get our own house in order first, and that's what we feel we have done as a board over these past few years. And now, we need to stand up and give this community the value for $2 that it should receive.
I agree. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you. Congratulations on Metro of the Year.
Thank you very much.
I know that our funding comes from the federal, and we get a different size pie. Does it make us get a bigger piece of the pie? Have they, have they recognized what we're doing? Because we are doing things that other cities are not doing.
So, it's pretty much formula-driven, and if you're on the coast, the coasts get the lion's share of the money. In the Midwest, we really, we've, we just don't get the same, we don't have the same gravitas as the coasts when it comes to transit. But... But it's, we're able, we're holding our own right now. And there's Kansas City and Dallas. And so they've been the big ones to go back and, and try and keep us in the fray. But it really is hard at the federal level to get a wink. We received the first, a grant award this fall. And it was a competitive grant award at the federal level. We were the only ones in the state of Kansas to receive that grant award. And it will bring us our technology that we're needing, our APCs, the, you know, some of the things we've been talking about, cameras, so that we get away from analog. So we receive, we can receive money for things, but not for operating. But we were proud to receive that grant because we've been applying a lot and we finally got one of the competitive grant awards. At the state level, that dollar amount has remained flat. That appropriation has been there for about 12 or 13 years. And we've been meeting with the legislature to try and get transit amount increased. There are 87 transits in this state. And so that, there is a dollar amount that's embedded in statute and it hasn't changed for a dozen years. And so our dollar amount has stayed pretty flat as well.
And that's why I asked, because I, I just don't understand how we're not recognized and we can, we are not able to get more funding because we do more than some of the other cities do. And it's been proven time and time again.
New York has more people lobbying for transit than we have employees.
Right.
And
And I, and I knew that. It was the lobbyists.
And that affects the whole, it is a testament, though, what Susan's staff's done. The fact that we're getting these grants, we, we have really no voice in changing that base operational grant. But we're picking at all the pieces around the edges and pulling in that money because of the work and the justification and the effectiveness of the staff in going after those grants.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Councilwoman Ester?
As I've told you before, you do a great job.
Thank you.
So in dollar amounts, how much money will a mill levy give you, dollars? And how much is it costing taxpayers?
The, the dollar amount is, is around 1.2 million that a mill raises. And then per household on a, it just slipped my brain how much per, on a $100,000 house and mill is. And I'm, I'm looking for some help here on that, Nick. I'm not sure if Nick knows, but
Someone can play the Jeopardy theme now while we're here.
I do not have the answer to that question. Yeah, Nick does.
One mil is about $11 on a $100,000 property in Topeka.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Emerson?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Ogilvy, first, you're a constituent in my district. But I really admire, I mean, there was a period of years, I think, where if you weren't on a committee in Topeka, it wasn't a real committee. But I, I thank you so much for your service and especially, I love this electric bus. And Mrs. Duffy, I really admired what you've done with our transit. And I admired what your husband did when he sat around this, this desk with, as a councilperson for so many years. All that said, this, this is really tough because, you know, we were just talking about the downtown T-bed and you see all those huge prime properties in Topeka are state buildings and they don't pay a dime of property tax. So therefore, relative to other places in the, in the, as you guys know this, relative to other places, other cities, we, we have disproportionate share on our, on our private landowners. So it, it's just tough that we already tax people so much. And we just ask for, you know, them, our citizens, to extend the sales tax for the streets. So I, I want to do everything I can to help you guys, but this is just, this is very tough, I think, probably for all of us. And I know you're not asking lightly. I just want to let you know where I am right now.
I understand.
We appreciate that, Councilman. I, I know it's difficult. It may have been, you know, hindsight being 2020, it may have been better to come at you each year and, and just a little bit. But we felt like we, as a board, needed to get our house in order for Susan to do what she needed to do to polish the organization, if you will, and for us to put in play some rather unconventional processes, try to bring our operating costs down as much as we could before. Because we were coming out of a recession as we faced all of these things. And we knew that, how tough it was in that period of time. We recognize that this is a lot to ask of anyone. But we hope that what we're showing is the level of value we're getting for what we're, that we're asking them to invest into the system.
Sure.
And Mr. Ogilvy, you know, we spent a couple hours, I don't know, last summer or the summer before, meeting and talking about the electric buses. And, and I love that idea. Would that been the cost curve enough? You know, is, is there a period of time where if you had a increase and if you could get these electric buses, would there be an opportunity to go back down into the mill levy? Based on the efficiencies?
I can't predict the future far enough in advance. I know what this allows us to get into. Our challenge is we're, by 2020, will be $3 million in the hole in terms of depreciation. And that's the money, seed money, that we effectively write the checks for on, on the buses. So consequently, I would love to be able to tell you, to break, I would love nothing more than to be able to turn that around on the way. But I can't in good conscience promise it to you now because we don't have any operating experience with those buses.
Sure.
Only know what we're learning from other places.
I would, I would like to add another perspective to the, to the thought process that we would all have as we're considering this, because this is a big decision. Make no mistake, I don't think that anybody signs up to be on the council so that they could work on raising taxes. Nobody likes that. But rather than looking at us raising taxes, I want to invite you guys to think of one thing. I'm going to call him Tom because I don't remember the name. But I, I'll, I'll talk to you about the gentleman that I'll call Tom, that when I was in the jump meeting, was talking about how he went from earning a $7 an hour job to making $18 an hour and was able to work full-time and changed his life and was able to pay his bills and then in, in turn, able to contribute back to the community. The other thing that I want us to remember is that there's thousands of Toms in East Topeka and in other parts of our community that are underemployed. Our unemployment rate right now is at 3%. And we need to figure out ways to contribute and collaborate together so that we could allow individuals that need to get to work the opportunity to do so. It's, it's, it's a hard sell. I'm, I'm not taking that away. But I'm just trying to remind all of us that the other thing that we're trying to do is that we always talk about health in all policies. And our metro is crucial to help families that maybe don't have transportation to stay healthy, to have access to the resources that they need by creating the proper environment for them to be healthy, which in turn then helps our community as well. So I know it's very difficult, but it's not just a spend. It's, it's really an investment in our citizens who have asked us that they want to see more routes and have asked us to have not only more routes, but, but, you know, but, but to just add more because they're, they're being successful. In addition to that, as we are being looked upon as a city that is going to provide attractive places, another thing that the employers want is they want to make sure that people know how to get to work and they have access to get to work. And that is why I'm excited that the Soto route that we have right now, employers believe in it so much that they're starting to contribute as well. So I think that maybe if we start investing a little bit, maybe we'll get the private sector also to partner with us in this endeavor. But I think that, that it's, again, I'm not taking away that it's a very difficult decision, but it really is an investment in our citizens. Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple of short sets of questions. One on the, one set on the operational side. And then I want to touch on the legislative agenda side for a minute. We just barely touched on it. First, on operations, I too want to compliment you because you have grown the service so much. And I also, I don't know what the right word is to use for it, but you've been, you've stretched it. You've taken chances on different programming and so on, kind of to see what would happen. And, and, and we needed that very much. But when you look at this budget nonetheless, and before I say that, there's some things that people have called and kind of harped on with me that I'm not hearing yet even. And that would be young people. And they're not, they're not down at the Target Distribution Center yet. They're not working at PTMW. They're working out at the mall or they're working in a fast food place or they're working daycare. And, and their parents are worried about them working at all. We want our youth to be employed and they need to get to work and they need to be able to get home without having to ask for a ride from a stranger. And so these fixed routes that are later at night, which really weren't even on the survey, as you keep unfolding all of this, I think that's still a book of business that, that has potential. You're teaching those kids to ride the bus while they're in school. I get it. And, and so we're moving toward that. Looking at your numbers, so with that new stuff in mind, your budget has gone up $2 million a year since that 2010 threshold year that you're talking about. And some of that is a substantial number of new administrative staff people or, I, more than a handful, I think. And also adding the bike share program.
Yes.
Could you talk a little bit about the, what you've done in terms of strategic planning and assessing some of those experiments in terms of whether they'll last long-term? If I'm correct, bike share, we don't yet have a way for somebody who doesn't have a credit card with a balance on it to use the bike share, for instance. So could you talk about how much, let's start with the bike share. It's costing and, and how you're seeing it as essential in this future? Because I love the bike share. Don't get me wrong.
You're right. So we have 300 blue bikes. CapFed is our sponsor and they've come forward and they've helped to mitigate the costs of the bike share program. These are not cheap bikes. In the three years that we've had them, three, three and a half years, we've lost one bike to being actually stolen. But they are expensive bikes when we bought them. And this program, because it has the GPS, there's a monthly, there's a monthly charge. But it is a program that we, we felt, we believed in and it's being underwritten mainly by CapFed. But it is a $225,000 program that we invested in. And we have 300 blue bikes out there and we keep the statistics and we're doing taco rides and different things going on and trying to teach what we find out. A lot of kids don't know how to ride a bike and hopefully they'll learn they don't have to buy a bike, that they can get on a Topeka Metro bike as they get older and ride. But you are right. We are limited by that credit card because that is our insurance in case a bike does not come back.
And Councilwoman, I'd also add, at the time that we made the investment in the bikes, we did something that was different than the norm. If you travel almost to any major city in 2015, they had a high-cost infrastructure built in to house the bikes. And so they spent a fortune, just go to downtown Kansas City. Those bikes require fixed locking systems and it costs a lot of money. We had enough money, we would have been able to put in about two of those and have 50 bikes and we'd been done. But we embraced a new technology and part of that in the give and take was to use the GPS. It costs us more to run the GPS, but it also allows us to track where the bike is. And that's why we've only lost one of our assets in all this time that we've been going. So we're constantly measuring that. And we recognize that at some point, we have to look at how much they're used versus what we pay in fees and try to strike a balance along the way. But we're, think about all the different services that an organization like us, which is a public agency, provides. And you look at the size of the commitment of CapFed to supporting that and how that allowed us to attract significant money from the state in grants that have helped pay for this along the way. Now, while our budget increased, we got some significant state grants out of this to support the bike share along the way. So the expenses went up in order to do bike share, but we also got a good portion of the money it takes to do bike share and gave Topeka something that I think we can all be proud of in the level of its use in the community.
Thank you. Could you talk about some of the other?
Yes, about staff. And we, we are small. And I have a management team and that is small. But when I came on board, there were no planners. We had, we had a contract with a planning company. Do you know how expensive it is to know that, oh, they've opened up a medical facility and we need to reroute? You've got to call the planner. They've got to do the planning and they're charging by the hour. And they're not familiar, that familiar with us. That's why a lot of things had not been done, is because there had not been a planner for many years. I understand years ago, there was a planner and he left and they never replaced him because they didn't have the money. But we needed a planner and Edwin is here tonight and I'm glad he's on board. And we also have somebody that's helping us with the amenities that we're putting in. 600 bus stops. We have, I believe, were up to almost 300. 41% are in with concrete, with a bench, with a shelter or just a standing pad. 41% of the way done. So we needed somebody to help get the, we're in the right of way. We still want to knock on that door and say, hey, would you mind if we put a bus stop here? Why? So that you are not getting the phone calls from people saying, I don't want a bus stop there. We have, we have, we're all so careful. If people don't want us to be in their front yard, we don't want them to, we don't want to be in their front yard either. So we need somebody to go out and do that knocking on the door. And so we've hired somebody and basically working with a lot of folks to try and get those bus stops in. Then there was no marketing staff. There's no marketing budget. But I can only draw stick figures. And I'm a government person, so I do everything in black and white. And I realized that real quick. My stuff was ride the bus now. You know, it wasn't too exciting. So we did hire a marketing person. She really doesn't have a budget. And our marketing is by our free ride days and the things that we do to generate enthusiasm. We, we just don't have marketing money. But they're creative. They've come up with, I hope you're out there seeing, Why I Ride. That's our latest video, Why I Ride, because I think we want to know. So we have to have something out there. Everyone demands it on social media. And I cannot do that. And so we needed somebody. And that's really where we've added staff. We did have to add somebody in our accounting. That why? Because we need that, Nick will understand this. You need that segregation of duties. And you can't have two people just playing off each other. You needed a third person. And that was probably my, I believe that was my first hire.
That plus the federal government said in our triennial review, you have to do this.
Yeah. So we have added some staff, but it's been very carefully. We need to make sure our operators are supported out in the field with supervisors. So if there's an incident, we can have somebody out there. And we have hired operators. Why? I do believe that our folks should work a five-day work week. The type of job they have is extremely stressful. You have the road, you have the weather, you have detours, you have passengers, you have crying babies. And so this is not an easy job. And to the best of our ability, we're trying to give them a five-day work week with two days off. They're not in a row necessarily, but we believe that is a humane way to, to, to have a career. These are not retail workers. These are people who have made this their career their entire lives and safety is number one. So we have hired more operators. I want us to be as safe as we can be. And that is giving them enough time to spend with their family, to get rested, to feel apart from our place. While they don't carry their business home with them at night, the business they have in front of them and behind them for 10 hours a day is a lot. And so we have hired more operators to cut down on overtime, but also to make people but also to make people feel human. Have we been able to maintain that five-day work week? No, Edwin will tell you, no. Why? Because we're having a hard time finding good, quality people. We're competing with signs that say, Frito-Lay, $70,000. Well, we don't pay our operators that much. So, we, we have spent money on staff. I, but I believe we've done it very wisely. And I'm glad you asked that question.
Thank you, and we can keep those in mind. If I can ask the two legislative agenda items. You, we've worked on our legislative agenda early, and I think we're going to get back to it even this month. So, this is good timing if there's something we can do for you. You mentioned that you are making efforts to see if the state would allocate more money for transit. Is that something that was taken care of in the transportation hearings, or something we can do now?
We, I have testified before the Transportation Committee several times. So have all of, a lot of our other transit folks around the state. And KDOT does see, I believe, the need for some additional dollars as we haven't had an increase in a long time. That might be worthy to put in there, I do believe. But yes, we will continue to advocate and stay a part of that process and see if we can get an increase. Our pie is split between five. Manhattan is now a small urban, so it's split between five entities. And it does not go very far. And everybody was asking for money, all the highway folks were. But transit's a small piece, but I believe it's a piece that we've been very good about advocating for ourselves. But that would be something we'd like to consider, yes.
Please.
Yes.
The, the other issue that came up that you really didn't dwell on, and I don't know if this is a question for you or for City Manager, was the, the issue of the tax lid. And cutting you loose from our tax lid and setting up a process whereby you would be independent. And I ask that question in the context of whether people think that there's going to be an effort to abolish the tax lid this session, so it's not an issue for us. And if you could talk about that a little, because I think that's part of what you're proposing in your resolution.
In this particular case, the change would allow the mill levy that is charged for the transit to be eliminated as an item regarding our tax lid. As, as far as a pursuit to eliminate the tax lid altogether, that is definitely a goal of the league. And it is there on their plate. And I'm sure Whitney will discuss that. It's one of the things that we're pursuing. But obviously, if you look at the makeup of the legis, you know, the legislature, it's not one of those things that we get really optimistic about potentially having happen. So, we'll see.
Okay. I mean, we get blamed for it whenever taxes go up anyway, whether we had anything to do with it or not. So, I don't know how that would go. And there, there's also been the push-pull, and it's late, so maybe for another time of, you know, that oversight that we've had by the conversation back and forth about whether your mill levy can go up. So, I just kind of wondered where we were on that. Maybe how strongly you all feel about it.
Well, we waited a decade before we came to you because there was a commitment for all the people that have served in that window to get our house in order first before we came to you. We haven't come to you every year. Come on, come on, come on, just been hectoring about, give us this little bit, give us this little bit. We wanted to show you that we could manage the money effectively. We wanted to show you that we could still move money around in a way that increased service and got more value out of the dollars. We're very conscious that this ask, like I said before, is significant. But we, we don't think that by changing those rules, it creates any situation that would change how we'd approach this. We're, we're committed to providing a high level of service, and we think we have to do that since you all appoint us, who serve on the board and would make these decisions. You have tremendous impact in this process.
Councilwoman McClear.
If, if you receive the mill levy money, how, how long is that going to sustain?
Well, as long as I'm here. I don't think I'll be coming back and asking for any more. But this would be effective January of 2020. And so, I would say that is going to take us out quite a, quite a ways. The other thing is, with the last purchase of bus, buses, we only got one-third of one of those buses paid for that we purchased back in 2014. So, and again, they were diesel. Electric was new, we weren't there yet. But hopefully, with the electric, and I don't know that we would go all-electric. There are some downside to that, too. I mean, we're studying this issue inside and outside, talking to other transits. But hopefully, if the government steps up and puts in their fair share, this money should, this mill levy should take us for a very long time. Very long time.
Deputy Mayor.
Just one final point I'd make. They're asking for the mill levy to be effective in 2020, so not next year.
No.
So, that gives everyone at least 12 months to plan, if not generally longer, because starting in January, you won't necessarily get them without your checkbook and start writing checks to the taxman. But I appreciate you coming this far in advance. That really gives folks time to get their financial house in order for this increase in what is essentially two years. So, thank you for giving us this much time in advance to get everything ready. Sounds like you guys really need it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation and for your time, and for the, like he said, the promptness in, in doing so, so that we're not doing this last minute. We appreciate all you do in our community.
Thank you.
All right. We are done with all of the items on the agenda. We now move on to the announcements. If the City Clerk would read the preliminary agenda.
The December 11th agenda includes a presentation from the Topeka Housing Authority. We have several board appointments next week. Consent agenda, we'll have a worktop claim for Greg Moody. Action items will include an ordinance for the 2019 Business Improvement District fee structure. Another ordinance for the 2019 Topeka Tourism Business Improvement District fee structure. We'll have a resolution to cover the 2019 governing body meeting schedule, and then we'll have an ordinance on the 2018 budget amendments. Discussions include Planning and Development Department, establishing a policy to waive certain types of building permits, and then a discussion on the governing body rules and procedures.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Want to bring something to the attention of the governing body. The next three days, the department directors and deputy directors and a number of other management staff will be in some pretty intense training with the Rapid Process Improvement for Managers training that we're going to be going through. We have sent 12 individuals through the facilitator training. That was done in November. And so, we're going to be in that training over the next three days. So, if you contact us, please be patient. We will be in that training with limited access to cell phones, et cetera, in order to be able to get back over the next three days. I'll be bringing a bigger presentation in January related to Rapid Process Improvement. But the basic purpose of it is, it's a lean concept that looks to take the waste out of work, processes, reducing defects, different things like that. And it's a process that I've used in the past, and I feel like it will be very successful for us, allowing staff to analyze the processes that we do in order to be able to make ourselves more efficient. And so, anyway, so we'll be in that training over the next three days. Just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that.
I just wanted to say thank you to the Police Department. We had the Christmas parade and the Christmas, the Christmas tree lighting. And it was awesome to ride in the 1939 car. And I received a beautiful throw that has Topeka Police. I have that in my house, and I, I cherish that. And it was beautiful to see our community come together. The, the streets on Kansas Avenue were completely packed. And it wasn't just Kansas Avenue. As we were turning, there were all the side streets, 8th Street, 4th Street. It was just like packed with people. The Iron Rail opened up, and the food is amazing. So, if you haven't had an opportunity to try it, I would, I would, you know, ask you guys to go ahead and consider checking it out. And with that, the next person would be Councilmember Coyne.
Nothing this week, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lesser. Councilwoman Miller.
I want to add my kudos to the chief and staff for the Topeka ID program. I think that that's really exciting. Wanted to thank the City Manager, and he advises me, maybe the clerk staff and legal for the upgrades in the alerts that we're getting about the additions or modifications to our agendas. I really appreciate that. I, too, my family was here. We had our Christmas this weekend, and we, the experience to share is that we all wanted to go to the Iron Rail. And went at 7:00 on Saturday night, and there was a one-hour wait. And with a three-year-old and a two-year-old, that was really not an option. But it was awesome to be standing there with my family on the sidewalk in Kansas, on Kansas Avenue on that Saturday night and see downtown packed, and realize that we had five other choices within a mile to go to that were open. And we ended up at the Wheelbarrow and had a great time. They had some live music, which we didn't know about. But that's what's happening in Topeka, and it was, it was really great. Winter Wonderland, it's not supposed to be raining this weekend. It's snowing, and whatever all else it did. So, Winter Wonderland will be going on, and events downtown, and in Noto, and elsewhere, both community and faith events. And so, a couple more nutcrackers for me to go see, so enjoy.
Councilwoman McClear. Councilwoman Ortiz.
I'd just like to thank the mayor for passing me up at the parade. I tried to wave to her, but she was too busy covered up with her little blanket and in that little police car. But on a good note, the girls did wave to me. I think I touched one of them, but, and I was too late to get to the lighting. She, she, she did it promptly, so anyway. I just want to thank the Public Health and Safety Committee for being very patient, and we've, and even staff. This, this has been, it's been very tedious, very, very tedious. I'd also like to thank staff for the clearing of the streets. I know people get yancy out there, and, and I, I know 501 got a little yancy, but, you know, it kind of hit us hard, and the weather was crazy. And I even tried to call Mr. Henderson, who was on his way out to make some money. So, you know, some people get real happy, some people don't. But I just wanted to thank, thank them, and Jason Peake and his crew. And, and I know I've been bugging the City Manager. He's probably glad that I'm going back to work. But thank you for your promptness in, in getting things situated on different occasions. But it's winter. We're in Kansas, and we're going to, we're going to have that. And we just kind of have to sift to it, through it, and to the new people. If you haven't been around, you will, you will. We did go to the Brass Rail. Padilla pointed out that Mr. Mays and his. So, it is, it is good, and it's good to see downtown just booming with the lights. And a lot of people are walking down there at night, and that's, that's awesome. Thank you.
Councilwoman Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just kind of piggyback on what Councilwoman Miller and Ortiz said. Last week, it was kind of like every night, it seems like we were doing something. I went to, took my dad to the Oak Ridge Boys concert on, I guess it was Wednesday night. And then Thursday, I went to see Noel here, my wife and I did. But before that, we parked downtown on Kansas Avenue. And my wife said, what's going on down here? There's a lot of cars. And I said, well, I don't know. I should probably know, but I don't. But there, there were a lot of cars downtown, in all the blocks of downtown. We parked there, went to the Iron Rail. Fantastic beer, by the way. Have a beer fly, I think $7 for like four. I'm not getting paid by them, by the way. But it was great, and of course, the Bab brothers are involved in that, Hotter Park guys. So, a great family, great food. Came and saw Noel, and I would, I guess, just, that was a fantastic, I would say like kind of like a Broadway-level production. Matter of fact, two of the people were, live in New York that were the leads. But the one thing I would say I would love to see, there was probably about 400 or 500 people there. It'd be great to see that, see T-PAC full, you know, 1,500, 2,000 people for something like that. Because if we want good things here, we have to, we need to support them. And, yeah. That's it for tonight.
Councilwoman Padilla.
It's always hard to follow you, because you don't know where you're going with it.
I don't either.
Anyway, I just would echo that. The production that we saw of Noel was top drawer. I mean, it was, I think, we were one of only five locations in the country that had that traveling troop here in Topeka. So, that's pretty significant. And the talent was excellent, the music was good. Councilman Emerson, I would have loved to seen that place just packed with people just so they could see something of that caliber. And I think there are ways for us to reach out to the community that still had that opportunity to experience that. And I talked with a few people there at T-PAC about that. And I was encouraged to know the things that they are doing to reach out into the community, and that's important to us. And I think that when we had the time to visit with them here, that was something, a directive that we gave to them is to reach out to the community so it serves a larger group of us. So, I enjoyed that. And downtown was packed and busy. I want to thank Councilwoman Ortiz again, as was stated by Councilman Lesser. She did an excellent job of running that union that we had for Public Health and Safety. It, it, it got a little, I don't want to say contentious, but there were some people who had to express themselves in the way, best way they knew how. And it, it was important for us to maintain some decorum so everybody could speak. And she did an excellent job in doing that. I was impressed with the way she handled the group there. So, the one other thing I want to say is that I hope that as we all prepare for the holidays, which we have started already, that we think about those same people who we listened to at that meeting. We provide a lot for our families, and understandably so. But give some thought to those people who don't have the family to rely upon for just a simple thing like a warm coat or clothing, or a place to bathe. So, I ask for that to be considered as we go into the holiday season. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
So, several years ago, my wife and I had the great idea that we were going to try and ride our bikes to every brewery in Topeka. And at the time, there were three and a half, and we survived. I don't think we can do that anymore. I've also been to the Iron Rail, and it's fantastic. I'm so excited to see businesses like that coming into our town. I think we now have six or seven breweries. I'd have to go back and recount them all. There are so many off the top of my head, I can't. But I, I think it's particularly exciting to see how our community is, is growing with these niche businesses and that sort of thing. So, I had one of the comment, and I'd forgotten it.
Size of the baby?
Oh, size of the baby. Actually, she hasn't told me. She's getting rather large now, so. Oh, right. No, so, we're, we're seven months along now, and my poor bride is, is doing the best she can with us. It's a whole new world for her, so. But the last comment I will make is, I really want to thank the guys that worked 24 hours a day. For our, our first snow event was quite a big one. I mean, usually, we get something to fool around with to make sure we know what we're doing. We got walloped. And I know there's a lot of folks out there who, it, it's frustrating, and I understand that. But at the end of the day, it's not just pushing snow. There's an art and a science to it, and it's, it's a lot more complex than just running a truck down a road. And I just want to remind everybody that, you know, those guys stayed up all night to do what they did for all of us, so we didn't have to get out and try to dig our cars out. So, thank you again, and have a great week, everybody.
All right. We now proceed to public comment. The first individual signed up to speak is Mr. Brian Brewer.
My name is Brian Brewer. I just want to apologize for the last time I was here. I kind of lost my cool. I told myself I wouldn't. Not the first time, nor the last time that's going to happen. I also want to say that I don't know if any of you guys had a chance to read that article that came out in CJ Online, but I want you guys to know that they didn't even mention the fact that the police officers, I don't know which one or who, called the lady's landlord. Next, they also said that, I don't know if it was an independent investigation review or whatever the thing said, where they said that no wrongdoing was done. or whatever the thing said where they said that no wrongdoing was done. I don't know if any of the city council has any clue what West's Kansas Digest is, but that is a publication that they put out that is the case law on the Kansas statutes. And I just want to read a few of these. A knock-and-talk is ordinarily consensual unless coercive circumstances such as unreasonable persistence by officers turns the encounter into an investigatory stop. A knock-and-talk procedure is a procedure in which an officer knocks on the door of a residence and asks to talk to the occupant and seeks consent. Relevant factors a court considers in determining whether consent to search is voluntary include physical treatment, use of violence, threats, promises, inducements, deceptions, trickery, aggressiveness, the physical and mental conditions and capacity of the defendant, the number of officers on the scene, the display of police weapons, and whether an officer read the defendant his Miranda rights, obtained consent pursuant to claims of lawful authority, or informs the defendant of his or her right to refuse consent. I mean, I've got several pages of these here, all with very clear and concise definitions as to what coercion is. When officers line up, they start with two, and they ramp up to five officers in front of your door after you've told them that you do not want your place searched, after you've tried to explain the situation to them, or explain that you weren't home during the incident, or what have you. It should not be ramped up. There should not be five more officers coming to check a hole in a screen that was there for a year. And if you guys would like to see the video, I would love to show it to you. I went to the press, to the written press specifically because I told you guys last time I was here. I did not want this sensationalized, but I do want it fixed. I think that you guys can work with the chief of police who, from, I'm new to Topeka, and I think he's new, not to the force, but as to the chief position from what I've read. But also, not just that, but also, who is this agency or whatever that did the review? I mean, there was no, I saw a thing on Facebook where Erie Police and Topeka Police Department are trying to go with the DOJ and be more transparent with their investigations, and yet what I read was that there was almost no transparency from the Topeka Police Department. Now, I don't know if this means that I have to pursue a litigation, but I know that I can't sue the police department, that I would have to sue the city of Topeka. And where does that leave me? That leaves my grandparents, my sister, everybody else screwed, and only thing that happens is money changes hands. There is no change in the legislation and the way these people proceed to do their jobs. And I don't, I'm not saying that they're doing a bad job. I'm not saying that I disagree with the police, because I've seen comments on Facebook where it's like, "Oh, this guy hates the cops." And I got two uncles who were police officers. I want equal protection within the law. If this would have been one of your guys' house, I mean, you recall the way I pounded on his podium, do you think one of the police officers would have went up to your house and pounded on the door like that? Like, do you think that, it just kind of blows my mind that these officers don't even know this. Like, if they would have known this stuff, this stuff that I just read you, that would have, this incident would have never happened. And that's what I come back to training. Officers need to be trained on the Constitution. It's the most important law in the United States of America, the most important. It protects all of our rights. And the second that one person's rights are trampled, all of your rights are trampled, because then it becomes case law, and the courts allow that kind of thing. Any questions? Last time, I kind of walked out because I was impassioned and didn't want to get into it with anybody.
Well, we appreciate your comments, sir. What we do during the public comment session is that we listen to your concerns. If you would like us to, the chief is standing over there, but this is not a time for us to have back-and-forth dialogue.
I didn't know if last time you guys had any questions or not. I guess I'll leave my phone number for you guys. Area code 720.
They'll take it.
480-9974. And if anybody does want to talk about it, or even wants to talk about how I see you guys could improve your police department, I'd love to talk about it, because like I said, I think it's trained. It comes down to training. That's why, that's why the courts don't allow us to pursue officers when we're pursuing litigation. It's called, I think, organized immunity, some kind of immunity. I'm sorry, it's slipping my mind right now. But that's why they don't allow us to go after these officers, and they say that we have to go after the city. And like I said, that's not going to solve anything in this case.
Well, thank you, thank you for coming over here. Yes, just a second, sir. Councilwoman Murphy.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. Mr. Brewer, thank you for your apology, and thank you for coming down and bringing that to our attention in a respectable way. Sir, I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I appreciate that.
Okay.
I understand sometimes it gets hard, but I have faith in the chief that if you haven't talked to him, that he will talk to you, okay? And thank you for your number.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person signed up to speak is Ms. Teresa Miller.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My first half will be very pleasant, and I'm sorry I'm going to have to be a Debbie Downer on my second half, but it needs to be discussed. First of all, I'm going to be Teresa Miller from what Topeka Wells Neighborhood Improvement Association, because the first part I'm going to talk about, well, part of, most of it, is about NIAs. An NIA, people would love to work with city council, because you've got to understand, our NIAs are formed of people that help vote you in your office. So we look towards you to work with us to better our neighborhoods. That's what our agenda is, is to work with you. Some do, some don't, I get that. We ask that you come to a meeting once in a while. We're not asking you to come to every single meeting. But when you do come to these meetings, you realize what your neighborhood is actually doing, and possibly you can help them, because we need a lot of help. It's unfortunate that some people don't see that. Here's where I have to come to, it's a situation that finally is the last straw that broke the camel's back with me. Over 15 years is what I've been doing with an NIA, and I've taken a lot of bull from a lot of people. That's part of the job. That's part of your job. You don't agree with everybody. I don't agree with everybody. But I'm a very, I've been told, very passionate person. When I go after something, I'm going to go after it. No is not an answer to me. I've never learned the word no. It's hard for me to hear that word, because there's always a way of doing something. And so I had a gentleman call me last week, and he left his message on my phone. His number didn't come up on my caller ID, which I don't know why. But what did I do? I accidentally hit the wrong button on my message machine and knocked him off, so I couldn't call him back. And I prayed for two days for this man to call me back, and he did. And I knew by the first message, he was very angry. And so he was very angry, the second time even more angry. So when I called him back, he really started verbally screaming at me because, "You need to do something with your streets, the ones that you decide which ones get fixed and which ones don't get fixed." And I said, "Excuse me? I have no power over any streets. I can help you turn in a pothole if you would like me to. I can do that for you." He says, "Well, my councilperson said that you are the one that picks and chooses the streets in your neighborhood, and you are the one that decides which, what potholes get fixed." I said, "You were wrong, sir." I said, "But you can send an email to Jason Peak and Public Works and also do your thing on the website, the turning in your pothole, and have your neighborhood do that also." I said, "But I have no power of what you were trying to give me." I said, "It'd be great, but I don't have that." And so what I'm asking, I don't know if this situation happened or not, or if he's just using those cues, but I don't appreciate having someone tell somebody that I have that power when I do not have that power, because it makes me look terrible, and then nobody wants to call me to help me, help them fix their problem. So that's why I'm here. I want to squash that problem, and I think what should have been happening, because what I was told, they did not volunteer to help them take care of this problem. This kind of left them hanging in the wind, which is something you guys shouldn't do. You should go a little step further and help this person out, because remember, they're the ones that voted you in. Have a nice night.
Have a good evening. Yes, Councilwoman Clear.
I wish you would have come to me before you came to everyone else, because what I told the gentleman was about the sort and about the grant and how you guys had met and talked about what streets you wanted to do. That's what I told the gentleman. So I wish you would have reached out with me and I could have told you that.
The reason why I don't is for two, almost two years, you have not come to our NIA because we made you angry, because we.
Ma'am.
But I'm just saying, I will not come to you because nothing gets done.
At this point.
And I apologize.
Because, so if you would need to have a private conversation with Councilwoman Clear, I would encourage you to have a private conversation with the councilwoman. Thank you for bringing your concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have the need to adjourn to three executive sessions tonight. We will recess after we make that motion, but if the city attorney could read the first parameters.
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed 10 minutes to discuss attorney-client privilege matters related to workers' compensation as justified by KSA 75-4319B2. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present. Members of the governing body, city manager Brent Trout, deputy city manager Doug Gerber, interim administrative and financial services director Nick Hawkins, human resources director Jackie Russell, risk manager Shannon Langston, and myself. No action is anticipated to be taken when the open meeting resumes.
Okay, we have heard the parameters. What is the, we have a motion by councilmember Cohen. We have a second by the deputy mayor. All of those in favor in recessing into executive session, please vote.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We will take a five-minute recess before the executive session and also to allow the room to vacate. Thank you very much. We have concluded, not concluded, but we are in need of resuming again the executive session for an additional five minutes. If somebody would make a motion, we have a motion by councilmember Cohen. We have a second by deputy mayor. All of those in favor in resuming the executive session not to exceed five minutes, raise your right hand. Thank you very much. We will resume the executive session. No action has been taken. We have concluded the first executive session. No action has been taken. We are in need of coming into a second executive session. If the city attorney would please read the parameters.
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed 15 minutes to discuss the acquisition of real property necessary for utility infrastructure as justified by KSA 75-4319B6. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present. Members of the governing body, city manager Brent Trout, deputy city manager Doug Gerber, interim administrative and financial services director Nick Hawkins, utilities director Bob Sample, water pollution control general manager Sylvia Davis, right-of-way agent Tom Allen, and myself. No action is anticipated to be taken when the open meeting resumes.
We have heard the parameters. What is the pleasure of the body? We have a motion by the deputy mayor, a second by councilmember Lester. So at this point in time, all of those in favor of recessing into executive session, please raise your right hand. All right. We are now entering executive session. I'm live? Okay. Okay. So we are live right now, and we are having to reengage in the same executive session. No action was taken in the last executive session. Therefore, I would like to see if there is a motion to extend this current session for 10 minutes, not to exceed 10 minutes. We have a motion by councilwoman Emerson, a second by deputy mayor. All those in favor, raise your right hand. We are reengaging in the executive session not to exceed 10 minutes. Same subject, no action has been taken. So we have concluded the executive session. No action was taken. We are in need to reengage in a third and final executive session for the evening. If the city attorney could please read the parameters. Yes, Councilwoman Ortiz.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting until we're done with our last executive session in case we need to come out and go back in.
Okay, so we, before we enter into the executive session, we do have an ordinance that states that the meeting ceases at 10 o'clock unless we vote on that. So at this point, Councilwoman Ortiz has made a motion to extend past 10 o'clock in case we need to go over that time. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
We have a second by councilmember Emerson. All those in favor of extending past the 10 o'clock hour, please raise your right hand. Okay? Now, we now will proceed with the parameters for the next executive session.
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed 15 minutes to discuss confidential employment matters pertaining to non-elected personnel as justified by KSA 75-4319B1 in order to protect the privacy of those discussed. To aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present. Members of the governing body, city manager Brent Trout, human resources director Jackie Russell. No action is anticipated to be taken when the open meeting resumes.
We have heard the parameters. What is the pleasure of the body? We move approval by councilwoman Emerson. We have a second by councilmember Cohen. All those in favor to enter into the executive session, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Now proceed to the executive session. We are in need of resuming the executive session. No action has been taken. We think that we need to extend for an additional 10 minutes, not to exceed 10 minutes. What is the pleasure of the body? We have a motion by councilmember Emerson. We have a second by deputy mayor. All of those in favor, please raise your right hand. We will resume the executive session. We have concluded our executive session. No action has been taken. We are now adjourned.